Here.
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 Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Uh, Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Anderson, please.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Couple housekeeping notes. Mayor Dan is not with us. He is traveling. He's excused from that. I point to housekeeping as Alderman of the 5th District. I will maintain my vote even though I am chairing the meeting tonight. Just a bit of, I think kickoff meeting, just general comment quickly. We obviously live in very interesting times here this week. Things, life has changed dramatically in a handful of days here now for all of us. I just want to call out and give my thanks to Andrew and your staff, Chief Kresik, Chief Anderson, Darcy, your staffs, everyone else in the building, leadership here, working hard for the citizens of the city. We appreciate everything you're doing and keep it up. We'll persevere. We'll get through this and life will go on eventually, so hang in there. But that said, we're going to move on to item number three, which is approval of the minutes of March 3rd, 2020.
For Kelsey, make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd, 2020.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Stain.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Next, given the news of the last few weeks and especially now, we're going to have our chief health officer, Darcy, give us an update on the COVID-19 and the situation the city finds itself in as well as the state and the rest of our country.
All right. Good evening. So, a lot of this information has been shared with you already. I'll go through it. I'll go through some of the new information that I have, you know, from today, and then there's questions. I'm happy to talk through some of those. So, this slide, you guys probably know all of this. You've heard it a million times by now. You know, COVID-19 is a new respiratory disease. Symptoms, fever, cough, and shortness of breath that we're seeing in a lot of the patients. And it's spreading quickly from person to person at this time. It's spread from respiratory droplets, so we're worried about coughs and sneezes, people that have dirty hands touching surfaces and someone else touching those surfaces, and that's really how we're seeing it spread. So, this map I pulled off the CDC's website today. The blue is where we're seeing high numbers of cases, so it's affecting most of the countries across the world at this point. This is a CDC map that was updated as of yesterday regarding the number of cases. It's already outdated, as we know the cases are growing exponentially every day, but there are now cases in every state, and we're seeing a larger number of states with, in a large number of cases. As of today, we have four confirmed cases. All four of those individuals live in the same household, so we had one yesterday that came back positive. Three additional people from that household came back positive today. That's no surprise, given what we know about how easy it is to spread the virus from one person to another. So, living in the same house is a high risk factor for catching it from someone else. So, I looked at the totals really quick before I came in here. I believe we're at a total of 24 people. 24 Oak Creek residents have now been referred to us as having been tested. The four have been positive. Five have come back negative, and we're still waiting on 15 test results to come back. We're seeing lots and lots of referrals every day, so all of those referrals have come in just since Saturday, I believe. So, we'll continue to see referrals coming in. Every time someone is tested, the healthcare provider is required to notify the Health Department so that we can make contact and start doing our education and our follow-up work that we do. You can see there, I put up the update. Hopefully you guys have seen this. I think I've sent it out to you, and we've been posting, we've been updating this document, excuse me, this graphic, every day with new numbers and changes as they come about with restrictions to gathering sizes or being out in the community, posting that on Facebook and the website every day. So, trying to keep the community updated as much as we can. So, some of the activities that we're working on right now, so we are required to follow up with all individuals who are tested, and then of course, some of those turn into positive cases, and when we have a positive case, we do what's called a contact tracing, which means that we contact that person who is ill, and we find out all of the people, place, people they've had contact with, the places that they've been, and then we have to determine if, which of those people needs to be notified. You know, if they were in a restaurant, for example, it's really hard to notify who was in the restaurant, but we do reach out to people that they work with, people if they're in book club or bowling league or things like that, where they might have had some sustained contact. We reach out to all of those people to let them know that they may have had contact with someone who is infected, educate them about symptoms, tell them what they should do if they get sick and how long they need to be paying attention to their symptoms. Some of those people need to be quarantined in their home. For example, if they've had sustained contact and they're high risk, they, we ask them to self-quarantine in their home for a period of 14 days. So, the contact investigations are very time-consuming. Most people have many, many contacts that we have to reach out to. We're also doing our best to stay up to date on the latest guidance, so as all of you know, things are changing very quickly, multiple times a day. Sometimes we're seeing thresholds change or guidance change, so we're having a lot of phone calls or webinars with the State Health Department or with Milwaukee County Office of Emergency Management. We're in regular contact with the other health departments in Milwaukee County and in southeast Wisconsin. We're sharing a lot of information, doing our best to kind of collaborate and work together because we're all seeing the similar things happen at the same time. We get multiple emails a day from the state, kind of helping us, giving us new tools, new documents, new information. So, it takes a lot of time to really make sure that we have the latest information and that we're using that latest guidance. As I mentioned, we're trying to keep the community updated as well. I know people want to know what's going on, and so Leslie from Communications has been very helpful with us getting information posted to the website and on social media. We're pushing information out to our partners. Every time there's updated guidance, for example, on testing or on which labs are on board, I'm sending that out to our Oak Creek medical providers. I want to make sure that they have the up-to-date information because that makes the process go better. We're also sharing information with other partners like childcare centers, schools, M A T C, close communication with police and fire. Just really want to make sure that everyone has up-to-date information. They all want to know what's going on, what they should be doing, what they shouldn't be doing. So, we're spending a lot of time on that kind of outreach and collaboration. Still also pushing prevention education, even though we are seeing cases here in Oak Creek and in the area, it's still important that we're washing our hands and covering our coughs and those things that can still help prevent us from getting sick, just like it always has. So, as you've heard in the last couple of days, the Governor Evers has been taking some actions for statewide guidance or orders. So, today, of course, he had the latest guidance where he announced that schools were being closed indefinitely, mass gatherings of more than 10 people are banned, and that all bars and restaurants are closed except for carryout and delivery service. So, we were expecting that to come at some point. Didn't realize it was going to come today, or we probably wouldn't have done all that work to make the changes in Oak Creek just a few hours before he announced them. But I do think, my hope now is that we've gotten to this point where we've, he's pretty much gotten everything to a high level of restriction and guidance. I don't expect that we'll see things changing as fast as we have anymore. There's not many more changes to make, and so that, I think that will help ease some confusion about what's allowed and what's recommended. We won't, it'll help, I hope, make our job a little bit easier because we won't have to be continuing to educate providers and people about new guidance. It'll just kind of stay status quo. We will continue to see more new cases coming in, and so we'll be busy with following up with those clients, but it will be a little bit less chaotic, I hope. That's my hope. So, some of the things that we've done here in Oak Creek that you're aware of, obviously as of today, all of our city buildings were closed to walk-ins or counter service. The library is closed. The rec department classes have been suspended. No one's allowed to use the meeting rooms. Staff are not traveling to meetings. We're assessing city employees who have been traveling to determine if they're allowed to come back to work right away or if they need to have a quarantine period, and then of course, later tonight, we will be requesting the emergency declaration.
Darcy, if I could just chime in on that slide, just for the council's benefit. You know, we were talking about these actions on Friday, and we did some interim measures on Friday. We reconvened as a group yesterday morning for a few hours and kind of came to this, these conclusions that I've emailed out, of course, and are recapped here. We are not at all atypical in that regard. There's probably one, I know of one, possibly another community or two out there that have taken more kind of drastic limitation or placed more drastic limitations, like, you know, we're closing down city operations for all non-essential. That's pretty rare. What we saw in the last 48 hours, I guess dating back to Friday, the last two business days, very similar actions to these around the state and obviously around the country too. So, we're not unique or alone. I thought that was worth mentioning. We constantly assess this. We will be convening again as a large group on Thursday morning to take some inventory of where we're at and produce some additional measures that we feel would help really keep the public safe, but as equally as important to that are our workforce here. So, if there's any questions on that, maybe after Darcy's presentation, we can get back to that, if there's anything else you want to know or any ideas you might have.
So, just some challenges, and I've mentioned a lot of these already. I think the rapidly changing information has been a big challenge and just a lot of work to keep up with that. And like I said, I hope that that, now that things I think will be slowing down from that aspect of changing guidance, that will make it a little bit easier. Excuse me. You know, we have a very limited health department staff, which, you know, normally is manageable, but with the number of people and cases that are coming in, it's quickly becoming unmanageable. We've been talking with some of the other city departments, for example, the library, about having some of their staff over, come over while the library is closed and help us with things like answering phones and some data entry, and I think that will be a big help. And there's also a lot of challenges around the testing process, so we've heard a lot about this in the news. It's still hard to know who's, who will, who, which providers can do the test to someone who's sick. Providers are not doing a good job of telling health departments when they're testing still. You know, they're still learning this process, so sometimes we get a result and we, for someone we didn't even know was tested, and that means calling the hospital and tracking down that patient information. And the lab capacity is limited. So, the State Lab of Hygiene and the Milwaukee Health Department are the labs in our area that are doing most of the testing, and they have said that they have been inundated in the last two days with far more specimens than they could possibly test. So, now they're having to prioritize and think about which tests are most urgent to get those results back, looking at people who are hospitalized, looking at healthcare providers who we need to know if they're safe to be taking care of patients, and really trying to get all of those through in a timely manner, but also knowing, again, prioritizing. So, those things have definitely been challenges over the past couple of days. And just some key takeaways, you know, situation is rapidly changing. We're actively responding. My staff are working many hours a day right now to try to keep up with the workload. We're still, we are recommending, of course, that individuals, individuals stay home as much as possible. We've seen that limit at 10 people, but our guidance when people are calling is really, you know, stay home unless it's really something essential. If you have to go to work, if you have to get your food, if you have to go to the doctor, but otherwise, we really want people staying home, not going into public places. And again, prevention strategies remain important, and we will continue to stress those, especially as we see more and more sick people. We really want people to be washing hands, using hand sanitizer, avoiding contact with sick people to limit the number of cases that we see in our community. I'm happy to take questions, if anyone has any.
Thank you, Darcy. Anyone questions for Darcy?
Nothing right for Darcy, but I'm just wondering if it'd be a natural flow to go right to item 19 from here.
The plan.
Okay.
Greg?
I just have a question on the testing procedures. I know it varies greatly, it seems, and there's not really set procedures, but just personal experience, we have a very extended family member who's been quite ill. I haven't been personally in contact with her, but she went to a provider and was told that she's not getting tested because she's not in a at-risk demographic. Is that a national policy? Is that provider to provider? Are people really not getting tested? And if so, do you know how, I mean, how are we going to track it if people are getting denied tests?
Right. I think that's a good question. So, we are definitely seeing, the CDC and the State Health Department have put out guidance on who should be tested. Initially, that was heavily focused on individuals who were traveling to high-risk areas. As we've seen cases rise across the country and across the world, the focus on travel changed to contact if someone who's had contact with a confirmed case. But now that we know that people are spreading the disease, there's community, what we call community spread, so people are getting sick even if they haven't traveled or had a contact with a confirmed case. So, now the recommendations have changed again, that they should be testing anyone who presents with symptoms and if they've been able to rule out other illness. So, we're still seeing influenza in the community. We think that we've passed the peak of that now, but we're certainly still seeing people diagnosed with that. So, the recommendations is that if someone presents with symptoms, they, they would be tested for influenza first or some of those other respiratory viruses, and if those come back negative, then the recommendation would be to do the COVID-19 test. Some providers, we're seeing some providers who are just testing everybody, people who shouldn't be tested, and we're seeing some providers who say, "We're not testing anybody. You have to go to the ER." So, that's why we're really doing a lot of provider education. We've been having regular calls, the health officers have with the healthcare systems in Milwaukee County as well, to kind of explain to them what we're experiencing. I think, you know, some of the head offices of the healthcare systems have these policies, but then when it comes down to the actual clinic here in Oak Creek or Franklin, those providers might not be aware of that, or they might not be following those policies. So, we're, it's taking a lot of time to help people access testing still, and we're hoping that will get better.
Right. And if somebody's, has symptoms, they're nervous, they call the Health Department here in Oak Creek, what are, what are they being told?
So, we are recommending that they call their primary care doctor first. We are not able to do the testing here. That's not a service that we provide. We don't frankly have the capacity, unfortunately, so we're asking them to connect with their primary care doctor. And then usually, the primary care doctor can tell them, you know, if there's, if they're doing it in their clinic, otherwise, a lot of people are being referred to an urgent care, and they're doing the testing. If they don't have a primary care doctor, then we're helping connect them with an urgent care that's in their insurance network. They don't have insurance, then we're working to connect them with a federally qualified health center or another clinic that provides free or sliding fee scales. We are also, but we've heard that they're going to be, the healthcare systems are working together to set up kind of a drive-through testing facility in just a place that has a lot of open space, a big parking lot somewhere where someone could literally drive up, get a test, you know, step out, get their, their nose swabbed, and then the test gets sent in. We're hoping that that gets up and running this week because that will greatly expand access to testing, but there's a lot of logistics involved in that, but the healthcare systems are working on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Darcy, in regard to the mobile sites, the media, both national and local, report that the results of the tests take anywhere from one day to several days. I mean, what could a person expect in our community if they're tested? You know, what are they going to find out?
Right. We're seeing most test results take two to three days to come back, but they have warned us just today, like I said, that they've, they're receiving far more specimens to test, and so we could see that being extended if they're not a high-risk person. It could take, it's possible to get results in 24 hours if they're being prioritized, but right now, I think with the backlog, that's not realistic, so it's probably going to be, I would say, three days is probably realistic for someone waiting on results right now.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Want to be mayor? I know what's your dream, Ken. If I'm reading this resolution right, if we adopt this emergency resolution tonight, in the case of a critical call being made, that, that would be, that would be the mayor's call on, if he can't convene a common council meeting? Is that, that's the way I'm reading this? Is that, Melissa, is that the case?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Is this unique to this resolution, or is that something just in an emergency situation at the mayor, when he gets the final call?
For us, and I, I will only speak for us. We've had many conference calls, same as Darcy, an hour and a half this morning with municipal attorneys across the state with things that are evolving. Frankly, it's my suggestion that we don't know what's to come and when we might next be able to convene, in addition to the thought that we have a set number of electives for a quorum. So, it's really anticipating those things. And to your point, Mike, I would say very strongly, I would discourage exceptions to our general processes in terms of convening meetings unless they are in this emergency situation. So, I would say generally speaking, there are exceptions that can be made for business continuity and management of our practices and meetings. I would be very candid in saying I would not encourage meetings other than the norm unless we had to. So, I think it's just more of a protective piece, not knowing when the council might have the next ability to convene and make these decisions. We could also have the mayor issue a proclamation, if that were necessary, to take some of these measures. So, really, it's before you, trying to cover the unknown of when we might be coming back, not so much doom and gloom as much as just trying to be forward-thinking.
Hey, the reason I'm asking that is not in reference to like everyday business. I think the mayor is definitely qualified to make those decisions.
This is extraordinary.
But in the case of, in the case of something major, and what I'm thinking is the election process, I would definitely not want to see the election process changed without input from the council.
I would submit that we-
And the city clerk, obviously.
We don't have the authority locally beyond the state, and without speaking out of that realm, I would defer to our city clerk, but it's my understanding that we are in a position with the state legislature where certain bodies are not going to reconvene until after the spring election, so we will be proceeding with the spring election as directed at this point in time. So, that would not be anything that we would have the ability to have the mayor make any type of unilateral order, and I would submit, nor would the council, except as to those, as you say, administrative, ministerial, how do we get people in for ballots and absentee or early voting?
Okay, thank you. I just had a few questions here. So, when the, of the four people, Darcy, that had tested positive or now positive, but have any of these people traveled outside of the country, do you know?
They have not.
They have not, okay.
We found out late today that it looks like the first person who tested positive may have had contact with an ill coworker. That was late in the day, so it was, we didn't get all of the information, but we weren't sure where they had contracted it, but it sounds like it might have been through a coworker who just tested positive as well.
Now, it's a tangled web, so so many people are connected here, and we have so many differing jurisdictions. So, when it comes to the school districts, if somebody were, was impacted at the school, for instance, maybe it was a student or a parent of a student, and maybe their parent, because you have parents that have different types of issues, health issues, that need to be part of the problem solving. Would they, would they be notified somehow, or is there something in process that?
Right. So, whenever someone tests positive, we do an extensive questionnaire with them to figure out all of the individuals they would have had contact with, and then we notify anyone who's identified as a contact. So, right, if a student, for example, at the school tested positive, we would figure out, you know, is it an elementary school student who's in the same classroom all the time? Is it a high school student who switches classrooms? And then we would, you know, sometimes it gets very complicated, and then we are able to consult with the state and kind of say, okay, which of these people is really at risk? But then we would notify all of them.
Just to add to that, to address your tangled web, just to be clear though, the, that will not be done in a vacuum, right? Like, school districts, nursing staff would not work in a vacuum, void of any, but that will still filter through the local health department. It wouldn't be one or the other.
Right. Yeah. It has to be led by us, and then we would reach out to, whether it's the school district or another employer, they would, you know, and we would work together to disseminate that message.
Before we leave that topic, would you just address the communication and the consistency with which you've worked with the school district leading up to ultimately their decision, and then the governor's decision?
Right.
And then what that contact with this, with the school district may look like moving forward? I think it's really important to understand that among the stakeholder groups that you're meeting with, there's a 9:00 AM daily call, there's a 3:00 o'clock daily call that I believe Chief Kresik, maybe Chief Anderson's also on, that could have been 4:00 o'clock. There's a lot of information sharing and a lot of, a lot of knowledge transfer, if you will, among the professionals in these fields. So, I don't want to understate that because it's, it's been amazing to watch you work, and I commend you personally, as well as the chiefs in the back. Could you talk a little bit about your consistent communication?
Yeah, we have had very consistent communication when we were leading up, even, I believe we had our, it feels like a long time ago, but I believe two weeks ago was the first time we met, and that was really before anything was even happening. But, you know, we had been in contact and decided we need to set a regular meeting to start preparing because we knew it was coming. So, we met several times in the weeks leading up to this, and then once things started happening quickly, we've met in person or talked on the phone every single day for the past probably week and a half. You know, I've been talking directly with either the superintendent or the deputy superintendent, really just giving them updates every day on what we know as far as it's changing, and they're doing the same. They're meeting with their cohort by conference call every day, so it has been very regular. I've really appreciated their collaboration, and, you know, I think they've been very open to suggestions that we've made, and they've, they've done some really nice work, planning and thinking about the impact to their families. They've done a great job with their communication to families as well. So, I think it's, it's really been a seamless process, which I've appreciated.
Thank you. That really was a kind of a segue, because then I wanted to go into protective services. How are, how are we handling that as far as, is it one man on a call, one person, or one woman on a call? How are we handling those calls when we're going out, you know, are we going in? You know what I'm saying? Are we covered there?
I caught probably the last three quarters of that question. Sorry, I was writing a note. Could you repeat that?
The question was about protective services. You guys are making your calls. How are you going on about a call differently now than you were a week ago?
Absolutely. So, what has been instituted over the last couple of weeks through the medical director of the OEM for Milwaukee County, we've initiated certain changes in protocols for our crews and certain changes in dispatch screening processes, really starts back at the dispatch center. So, how the dispatch, dispatcher will triage that call and identify certain criteria that would trigger certain actions by us, specifically a sort of syndrome that would be representative of COVID-19. Once that's identified, that information is transferred to our crews when they go in route to a scene. Initially, our preparations for that really surround around the use of PPE, the proper protective equipment, that were, that was recommended by the CDC. Understanding we had those protections in place, we would be able to assess the patient and transport them, following up at the end of the call with the proper disinfection protocols for our apparatus. Now, that is a continually changing process for us. Those notices from our medical director change quite frequently based on equipment availability. The screening process has evolved a little bit further to ask some more probing questions to the patients in an effort to create a bit of isolation for our crews. For instance, if that patient can get to the front door, that presents an opportunity for us to reduce a certain degree of exposure. Obviously, medical condition dictates how that will be treated, but if the, the set of complaints by the patient meet some criteria, we'll try to get them to the front door. Our response for those type of patients has evolved from sending a crew in to do the assessment and then transporting with the entire crew in PPE, to now starting to address it with one provider, making that initial contact, triaging the patient, and then determining the number of resources required to provide patient care. Again, that helps to reduce some of that exposure and keeps our equipment in reserve also. None of that certainly trumps the patient's condition. Patient condition dictates how we approach and how we treat that patient, so certainly if it's a critical case, all hands on deck. But if the patient's condition warrants, we're taking a more metered approach to try to reduce that exposure.
I would just add to that, that whenever we have a confirmed case, we do notify dispatch that they need to use PPE when they respond to a call at that address, and we do that with any communicable disease, so we're not calling and telling them which, which person it is, or, you know, we're using HIPAA, following HIPAA, but we do put that red flag on that address to protect our first responders.
Thank you. Yeah, last couple of points I had is our website and Facebook, both very helpful tools. And actually, I went on the website today, and there's a lot of information there, so I know, I heard Leslie had been working on, a lot of people, whoever it was, a great job there. And then, one last, we're- And then, one last weird, maybe not weird question, but, you know, homeless, we have homeless people in Oak Creek. Are they, is there a concern for those types of people, or what are we doing for them?
I think that's a good question. I know that, you know, Milwaukee County, the Office of Emergency Management has been doing planning around the homeless population across the county, so I think that they are, you know, there are organizations that work all the time with the homeless populations, and so I think that they are still going out to connect with them. I know that the, the school district, and this is not directly for the homeless population, but they are still providing lunches, and as part of that, they, the Salvate, they're partnering with the Salvation Army, and they are taking some vehicles, vans around, and distributing meals to some apartment buildings and some other sites in Oak Creek. So, you know, I do think that that's a, it's a concern, they're a vulnerable population, especially during an emergency situation like that, but I think that there are resources that are working to address those needs.
Very much, Darcy. Greg, you have one more?
I just had a follow-up question for police and fire. I thought I read that the county as a whole, the 911 system is getting overrun with calls. Are you noticing calls, people calling 911 for a fever and a cough? And how is the response? And is there any public outreach to educate people not to call 911 for a cough? Or do you just go to those calls anyways?
With the, I have not been notified of excess number of calls coming in. We get 911 calls for somebody's grill being too smoky at times, so our dispatchers handle those very well. We've changed a lot of our protocols on what we're responding to. They dispatch fire. We are not sending officers to coughing calls. Life-threatening calls, yes, heart attack patients, things like that, but the illness calls, that's no longer a police call that we're assisting on. The, but those calls for service, I have not been notified of them. We have not had to transfer to our backup, they have not had to transfer to us. I'm on the county calls at 3:00 every day, that has not come up as a concern from everybody, and we had a law enforcement call at 1:00. That has not come up as a, an issue at this point with that. So we haven't had the message for it at this point, but it's something we can consider to do and in our continued messaging.
From our perspective, again, we have not heard that the 911 system is overwhelmed, and certainly with the police dispatch center, we would defer to them for the volume that that is being taken in for those call types. I will tell you that the initiative from the fire service has been to emphasize the use of 911 for life-threatening emergencies. That messaging has, has initiated in an attempt to prevent that overload of the 911 system. If we can get ahead of it with the appropriate messaging, there's certainly an opportunity to avoid some failures of the system.
Thank you.
Real simple question. In regards to the federal communication, is the, I believe it's the HH, HHS website, are you an advocate of, of that being an initial stop? I know they kind of have a, kind of a filtering of, if you have this, you go down this avenue, if you have this, to get down to even see if you need to be one, an individual who needs to utilize a test. Is that up and running, and are you an advocate of that, or would you prefer other, you know, maybe more local communication?
I'm, I'm not super familiar with that website. I've primarily been using the CDC and then the State Department of Health Services website. So it sounds like they might have added this tool to that HHS website you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have to check it out, because I haven't seen it, to be honest. The CDC has a lot of good information. They're adding more information every day and keeping it up to, pretty up to date, and the state website as well. So those are definitely reliable sources.
Anything else, or Darcy? Good, and in the interest of saving you some time and letting you get back to more important things, we're going to move the agenda around just a bit and cover item number 19 right away here. That is a, to consider a resolution declaring a public health emergency in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Andrew, you want to kick it off, or Darcy?
I think in combination with, with Mike-
Yeah, Mike's going to kick it off, and then-
Mike and, Mike and Melissa.
So this evening in front of you is a, a resolution proposing the declaration of a public health emergency in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. And I'll provide some brief statements to kind of summarize some of the background associated with that declaration, and maybe the reason it is being brought forward at this time. Now, certainly in light of a, a federal declaration, a state declaration, and a county declaration, along with other municipalities in the region making similar declarations, this certainly brings us in line with some consistency with those other municipalities, county, and state governments. And that certainly does create some opportunities for flow of information through, through chains. It does open up an opportunity for resources, not only through equipment chains, but also potentially financial reimbursements. I really wouldn't get into great detail about that, because I think that is something that has to be vetted quite carefully, but certainly the declaration does present an opportunity for that. It does increase permissions and the ability to take actions related to a public emergency. And finally, I, I think it, although not functionally a key component of it, it does reinforce the importance of the situation in front of us right now. I, I think Darcy alluded to it, really, there's a flattening of the curve associated with this in an effort to reduce the number of cases. Our healthcare system has limited capacity, and that capacity can be overrun rather quickly. A small percentage increase in the number of cases over any given timeframe certainly has a capability to fill up emergency departments and ICUs. So certainly, the declaration helps provide a reinforcement to the community of the seriousness of the matter and the importance of the prevention steps being taken.
Great, I trust you guys have had a chance to peruse the various items on the, contained in the resolution itself. State statute, I think, Melissa, if I take the liberty, I think governs most of these provisions in terms of driving powers of emergency management, local, local government. State, when push comes to shove, and the federal government, obviously, are ultimate authorities.
Yes, there are references to statute, Chapter 323, and then certainly in our Code of Ordinances as well. We have provisions regarding these emergency situations, which frankly, closely mirror statute, but to that end, we have our laid-out process for emergency management situations, and I would submit that that's what's been happening behind the scenes and at the forefront with your leaders here.
I don't, I didn't come across anything that raises eyebrows. To me, it gives appropriate power to the folks who are in, in a position to know better and to know, at least have better information than us, although it obviously leaves the common council with its legislative powers, I believe, where we, where we should protect them for the citizens. Any other questions or comments?
I just had a question, you know, it does have Dan's name in here. Now, if mayor, if Dan's out of the country and you need the mayor to step in, does his name need to be in there, or can it be the person's, you know, you know what I'm saying here on the last?
Sure, if there is an issue where the mayor becomes unavailable, frankly, he is referenced in this resolution by statute as being that authority.
Okay.
If there is an issue that arises, we certainly will take the necessary action, be it by way of a proclamation or what might be necessary. And then if there were any such proclamation, for example, if the emergency declaration that is before you now were not coinciding with a previously scheduled common council meeting, we would bring that proclamation back before the council to be ratified as soon as you next convene. So we would have the ability to continue, consistent with getting the necessary business done, I think as Alderman Toman had inquired about a little bit ago.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on item 19? Steve, you good? Greg? Rich? All right, I'll take a motion on item, item 19.
Clerk moves to adopt Resolution Number 12148-031720, a resolution declaring a public health emergency in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus.
Any second? Go call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Great, thank you all.
I would just offer briefly that our emergency operations center, there has been some planning meetings behind the scenes to stand that facility up. More information will follow. We feel that's a great conduit for the provision of information to the council, so certainly we will keep you informed on that progress.
Great, guys, you're doing a great job, keep it up. Moving on, item number four, unfortunately, the presentation by the roundtable robotics team has been canceled. I will look forward to hopefully seeing those folks at some point in the future. Public hearings, item number five is to consider requests submitted by Eric Ogden of Oak Creek Rossin Industrial LLC for a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot facilities on the property located at 610 West Rossin Avenue. Kathy, you want to read that into the record?
Certainly, public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by Eric Ogden Oak Creek Rossin Industrial LLC for a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot facilities on the property located at 610 West Rossin Avenue. Applicant is Eric Ogden Oak Creek Rossin LLC Industrial LLC. Property owner, Oak Creek Rossin Industrial LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is March 17, 2020.
Great, Doug?
Thank you, good evening. It can be a little bit different this evening, given some of the circumstances, but nonetheless, it is a public hearing on a request for a freight yard, freight terminal, and transshipment depot for the property at 610 West Rossin Avenue. The applicants, in this case, Oak Creek Rossin Industrial LLC, are requesting approval of this conditional use permit that would cover that entire property. Now, freight yards, freight terminals, transshipment depots are conditional uses in the M1 Manufacturing Zoning District, of which this is zoned. And this is a little bit different in the sense that typically, the commission, the council, would be presented with a conditional use permit for a specific user within the building. This is an instance where the, this building was developed, it's a brownfield development of about 180,000 square feet, of a facility which is really conducive to that type of logistics use, that in many cases requires a conditional use permit. The applicants are requesting this as it applies to the entire building in order to avoid the necessity for each individual tenant, and there could be several, to come before the, the plan commission, the council, to receive and secure an individual conditional use permit. I've, again, I've said that the building was designed for that, there is a, a area that was designed for trailer stores, there was, the docks were designed such that they do not face the public right-of-way, there is appropriate screening, and from the sense of the building being able to accommodate that, I think that the commission felt in their review that that was appropriate for that, certainly in their recommendation, they have recommended approval of this conditional use permit. This being a public hearing, and I understand the limitations on possible attendance this evening, I will ask that anyone who has any questions or comments to, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. I will note, however, as well, that if anyone is watching this through our live stream and has any questions regarding the proposed conditional use permit, please call the planning department through the general city hall number, go to our website. I think it was mentioned earlier, there's resources that allow you to really investigate and review some of the things that are happening with respect to zoning changes, land use changes within the city from, from your laptop, from your phone, what have you, through some of our mobile applications. So there are a number of resources available to the residents, to the relevant community to access our services during the interim, when we may not have the access that we're accustomed to. But given that this is a public hearing, I would open that public hearing and defer that to the council for action.
Thank you, Doug.
Can I just add to that, Mayor Protem?
Go for it.
Is that your title?
I don't know.
Acting mayor. Doug, just to clarify for the council and maybe for those at home, the proposal here is for a new construction, and there is not any, to my knowledge, even maybe on the south side of Rossin, there's no adjacent residential homes, it's bordered by a rail spur, our own fire department is adjacent to it, so-
That's correct.
Very likely, even in normal times, we might not have, have had much interest from, you know, the residential community, so to speak.
I believe that-
Maybe Mike wants to object to it, but-
I, I believe that to be the case, and in fact, at the plan commission, I don't recall that there was any-
That's another good point.
-public, public comment with respect to the proposed conditional use permit.
Plan commission, I thought they were all in on this. They didn't see much of an issue, other than possibly traffic as, as being an issue with big user of the west or east.
Dukniak, third district. Can, can there be, Doug, can there be-
Well, I mean, I, I think just procedural, I think we should probably go through the public hearing process, and then before we open it-
Yep, my apologies. So we have three calls available, and call number one. Michael.
Mike Kressig, Fire Department, I get to come up here as a resident, and I would assume a, a business owner in the area affected by this. I did have the opportunity to, to speak at the plan commission, and, and that is correct. It's less of a, a discussion about the, the use of the structure or proposed use for the structure, but a consideration for the council for Sixth Street and the Rossin Avenue. Certainly, I have no issues to report with our current relationship with UPS and the trucking in the area, but as volume and traffic does increase, I think just a, a matter of awareness that we do exit our fire station for emergency responses on the Sixth Street, and the only direction we can go is south, unless we're heading to UPS. So a consideration that any additional facilities will add a certain amount of density to that road, and it may be a future consideration to, to look at capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Call number two. Call number three. With that, we will close the public hearing and move on to consideration and discussion from the common council on item number six, which is the ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for a freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot, and facilities for the multi-tenant building on the property at 610 West Rossin Avenue. Ask Doug a question? Go for it. Okay. Thank you, Alderman Dukniak, third district. Doug, without the conditional use permit being passed, can there be tenants in that building?
Absolutely, and in fact, there are tenants in the building, and in fact, one of those tenants really was the initiation for the discussion with respect to the need for the conditional use permit for the entire building. Some of the things that this tenant did were logistics-related, but the business as a whole did not reach the, I guess, the threshold that we would have considered a freight terminal, transshipment depot, what have you. This just kind of clarifies that future tenants, I mean, would be bound by the conditions and restrictions, should they have that type of operation in the building. But yes, there are, there is at least one tenant in the building.
Great, so you just answered my second question. I did notice a number of cars on the west end of the parking lot, and I didn't know if those were vehicles of the developer, or if in fact there was a tenant, so that's good news. Steve?
Alderman Kerkowski, first district. I'm, I think I read in the, in the, in the minutes from the plan commission and such, Chief Kressig, the issue with the fire department on the, it would be on the west side of that building, were all resolved, there was some, through, you know, some traffic issues that you had addressed.
Mike Kressig, Fire Department, yes, that, that is correct. There was an issue related to access around the building. We had a workable solution during the construction phase on that, and now there is some expansion being proposed to that access road on the west side, which is advantageous to us.
All right, thank you. And I understand the, the concern with the increase in truck traffic at Six and Rossin and such. I'm just hopeful that fire trucks enter the intersection, and trucks are entering the intersection, everybody will stop and let you go through, but hopefully, the regular truck drivers will understand that there's a fire department just to the east of them.
In no way would I, would I represent that there has been any issues. It's been a good relationship, the truck drivers are very good in that area, it's just a matter of capacity, and as lanes fill up, just a consideration for the future.
All right, thank you. Doug, one question is, I'm okay with giving blanket, or tenants, let's just get this over with, so that the landlord can probably, you know, rent out the other two places, they don't have to go through all the same stuff over again, but is there any provision or any way that we can make sure that, I mean, we're going to let them go ahead and have a freight terminal there, but let's just say some company comes in there that we're not exactly thrilled about having there, and we've already allowed the freight terminal to be created, but now we've got something that isn't exactly, you know, call it the master plan or the, whatever for the city. or the whatever for the city. What process do we have?
Well, I think that the processes, and the process that has been fulfilled through the commission's review is that as you have a conditional use permit and conditions and restrictions, that really look at the operational impacts of a potential user without knowing that who that user is. And to the extent that someone came in and operated within those operational parameters established in the conditional use permit, I think we're fine with that. And if they don't, then there are opportunities available for the city to enforce those conditions and restrictions. And if, for whatever reason, it remains a concern, and those are still being violated, there is an opportunity for revocation of that conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Mike, any questions?
No, I'm good.
You see, and good. Well, sir. With that said, I will take a motion on item number six.
Kroski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2967 to approve a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot facilities in the multi-tenant building on the property at 610 West Rossin Avenue.
Lorick will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duquesne.
Aye.
Great. New business. Item number seven, then, is the Consider Resolution Authorizing Issuance and Sale of Approximately $5,075,000 Taxable General Obligation Refunding Bond Series 2020. Actually, the next four items are bond issuances.
Justin, hold on.
Justin, great. Justin from Barrett is with us telephonically. We'll kick it off to Bridgette. Just to note that I'll be abstaining on these four items per my agreement with my employer in the city.
Three items. Item seven, eight, and nine, if I could, please speak to them in general. It'll just go a little bit quicker for everybody. So at the March 3rd council meeting, we had plan of finance for these four projects that are being covered by three debt issues today. The first is for the Emerald Row Phase Two refinancing. The second bond is related to Amazon and Stand Rock, and the third is related to Zuned. So I placed on the dais at your seats the updated resolutions per where the bond sold today. Justin can tell you a little bit about the worries we had going into the market today, but the positives that we came out with, lower interest rates than what we were projecting in the plan of finance. He has a nice document here that I also handed out that has the summary of each issuance, as well as the Moody's press release. So as we went through this process, and we do each and every time we issue debt, we went through our rating with Moody's. They reaffirmed our AA2 on all of our existing debt, as well as issuing these new issuances with a double A2. So positive movement. Justin, if you want to cover the interest rates, that would be great.
Yeah, thanks, Bridgette. And thank you, everyone, for allowing me the opportunity to call in here. Definitely interesting times we're in, so I appreciate the flexibility. As far as the stock market, the bond market, very volatile right now. The fear and uncertainty that we saw the first two months of the year kind of turned to panic in the last week or so, as more cases of the COVID virus came to the United States. That fear and uncertainty created a little bit of panic, which caused a liquidity concern in the markets. Fortunately for Oak Creek, like as Bridgette said, a very strong bond credit rating to the name. You know, it's viewed as a very safe investment, so the city was able to enter the bond market today and sell the bonds at very low interest rates. So in the packet that I believe Bridgette may have provided you on page two of that presentation, there's an issue summary for each one of the financings. So the first one being the taxable general obligation refunding bond series 2020C. The amount, $5,070,000, will close April 1, 2020, and the maturity is arranged from October 1, 2021 to 2032. First interest payment's going to be next year, April 1, 2021. The call feature on these bonds is October 1, 2027. Double A2 and the interest rate a 2.53%. So for our planning estimates related to that issuance, we were using a 3.24%, so significantly lower than our planning estimates, which resulted in about a $283,000 lower total interest costs related to that financing. So excellent news there. Yeah, the next one is the taxable general obligation promissory note, series 2020D, in the amount of $5,160,000, again, based April 1, 2020, with maturities April 1, 2021 to 2023. First interest payment will be next year, April 2021, and the call feature will be April 1, 2022. Again, double A2 rating and the interest rate received 2.45%. Planning estimate was 2.73%, which resulted in about a $96,000 in lower interest costs. So again, good news there. The last one was a taxable general obligation promissory note, series 2020E, in the amount of $835,000, closing April 1, 2020, with maturities October 1, 2021 to 2029. First payment being next year, April 1, 2021, and the call feature being October 1, 2027. Double A2 rating and the interest rate for that financing, 2.47%. Planning estimate was 3.09%, which resulted in about a $31,000 savings to the city. So in all, over $400,000 in savings versus our planning estimate. So excellent news. I mean, you can see the interest rates being around a 2.5% for taxable debt. It is great news for the city, and, you know, you should be very happy that and proud that you have such a strong bond credit rating, because there are communities that are having trouble accessing the bond market if they don't have a strong credit rating tied to their name. The last few pages is the rating report. Nothing really significant in here from prior reports. I won't go through it, so, but it basically just reflects why the city receives such a strong double A2 bond credit rating.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Any questions for Justin to process here? Andrew?
Justin, would you just touch again? I know we covered this in the plan of finance. This is Andrew. I know my voice is recognizable. But on the plan of finance, well, remind us regarding the plan of finance, on the series 2020D, why the call feature April 1, 2022, with the other ones are October of 2027? Could you just remind the council what the strategy is regarding that?
Absolutely, Andrew. So that particular series is related to the Amazon and Stand Rock developments. And so from the Amazon perspective, for that pro forma, we originally were going to take this issue out longer, but because of where the valuation for the project is projected to come in at, it was prudent to shorten the amortization and pay less in interest cost versus taking it out longer and paying unnecessary interest cost. So that was the reason behind shortening it up back to a three-year financing. The other one is the Stand Rock development, and that one, that one basically is still in the process of development. And so the first revenue source won't come in until 2023. So the strategy here was to have this be almost a short-term interim financing until we are at the opportunity where the development has occurred and the assessment has been hit. At that point in 2022, we'll look at refinancing or restructuring the debt and take it out into a longer-term financing based on the revenues that are projected to come in at that particular time.
So we're very frequent flyers with regards to short-term issuances requiring the increment to catch up when we borrow on the outset of a project. So that kind of explains the Stand Rock. Again, though, with where the valuation came at for Amazon, where the ultimate valuation may be next year, at 100% complete. I know I reported out to council on that. This also gives us a lot of flexibility should that valuation be contested in some way, shape, or form. So I think we have flexibility to react to that, should the valuation kind of come under scrutiny, or we have some deviation from where we expect the valuation to come in.
Great points, Andrew. Yep.
I'm here, I might as well speak.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Great, thank you. Great work, Justin. Appreciate the help. We'll take a motion on item number seven.
So if we could have the motions be the dollar amounts on the actual resolutions, these are the updated dollar amounts with the lower interest rates. Please.
They're in order.
They are in order.
Lorick moves to adopt resolution number 12139-031720, Resolution Authorizing Issuance and Sale of $5,070,000 Taxable General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2020C.
Next, second with a correction on the amount. Go read that, Rich. You get to read the report. 5,070. Oh, okay. Yeah.
So it's an estimated amount on the agenda, and then the resolution gets finalized during the day after the sale of the bonds.
Great, thank you all. Duquesne Act, second. Lorick's first, Duquesne Act, second. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Gail.
Epstein.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duquesne.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item number eight is a resolution 12140-031720, Resolution Authorizing Issuance and Sale of Approximately $5,160,000 Taxable General Obligation Promissory Note, Series 2020D. Other discussion and questions? If not, we'll take a motion on that.
Lorick moves to adopt resolution number 12140-031720, A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of $5,160,000 Taxable General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series 2020D.
Duquesne Act, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duquesne.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Epstein. Item number eight, or item number nine, excuse me, Resolution Authorizing Issuance and Sale of Approximately $835,000 of Taxable General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series 2020E. Questions, concerns? Nothing? If not, we'll take a motion on that. Item number nine.
Lorick moves to adopt resolution number 12141-031720, A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of $835,000 Taxable General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series 2020E.
Act, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Krokowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duquesne.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Epstein.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Thank you, Justin.
Great, thank you.
Take care. Stay healthy.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 10 is a Consider Ordinance 2966 to repeal and recreate sections 2.07 Sub A, Sub 4, Sub B, 2.07 Sub A, Sub 5, Sub B, 2.07 Sub A, Sub 6, Sub B, 2.07 Sub A, Sub 7, Sub B, 2.07 Sub A, Sub 8, Sub B, and 2.07 Sub A, Sub 9, Sub B of the Municipal Code relating to Polling Place Locations for the City of Oak Creek. Catherine?
This is just a cleanup item. While reviewing a section of the code verifying our polling locations, we noticed a discrepancy where we had neglected to update these sections. So it's really just a item that needs to be taken care of.
Kind of essentially just a housekeeping item.
Correct.
Great. Any questions of Catherine, concerns, comments? If not, we'll take a motion on item number 10.
Lorick moves to adopt ordinance number 2966, An Ordinance to Repeal and Recreate Sections 2.07 Sub A, Sub 4, Sub B, 2.07 Sub A, Sub 5, Sub B, 2.07 Sub A, Sub 6, Sub B, 2.07 Sub A, Sub 7, Sub B, 2.07 Sub A, Sub 8, Sub B, and 2.07 Sub A, Sub 9, Sub B of the Municipal Code relating to Polling Place Locations for the City of Oak Creek.
Act, second. Thank you. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Duquesne.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Krokowski.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And please, chief, item number 11, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Police Department to Transition to Provide Services as 911 Public Safety Answering Point.
Chief, they're not picking you up on the microphone.
There you go.
There. Got it. Okay. I didn't want to touch.
You got to send a touch here for you, buddy.
Yeah. So we're the 911, the P S app for Oak Creek and St. Francis for all emergencies, police and fire. What most people think is we get every 911 call that comes to our dispatch center right to the center. And the way our technology is in our dispatch center, we're currently only receiving direct landline phone calls to our dispatch center. Cell phone calls currently go to Milwaukee County Dispatch Center, and then are transferred to Oak Creek. That actually causes a little bit of slowdown in time to get calls for our residents. And this discussion actually began about a year and a half ago, when the county started to research having municipalities take their own 911 calls. They used to take all of them they wanted. Then we tried to do this years ago, and it was something that we weren't able to accomplish. With all of the changes, the county created an advisory committee, and actually, our IT director sits on that advisory committee as a representative for the suburbs. And so they've been researching this, because one of the things that the county had proposed is they could keep taking our 911 calls, but we would have to pay a fee for that, or we could take them ourselves. The advisory committee came out recently and said, "We don't recommend you billing the municipalities." They're an advisory committee, that's what they came out. But there's another technology coming out in the future, Next Gen 911, which is referenced in the council report. Next Gen 911, it will be integrated with the GIS system, and it will basically, they'll have to manipulate the towers. So if a call hits a tower in that, your call hits a tower in that geographical area, it will automatically send that cell phone call to the proper dispatch center. That technology is anywhere from five to seven years away. We're not sure. We wrote for a grant for some of the equipment for this. We got a letter today saying we were denied the grant for it. And I also want to make clear, I'm only looking, I'm only asking for us to take 911 calls for our Oak Creek residents. This is not something we're doing for St. Francis, the community we dispatch for. We're looking to do this for Oak Creek. The reason is, Next Gen 911, when that comes here, and I did have conversations with OEM, who runs the county dispatch center, that was before all of our other conversations recently, and advised what we were planning, what I was going to propose in Oak Creek, that we start taking our calls. The only other suburb on the south side that takes their own calls is Franklin, and they've done this for years. And they've been able to manage that. So all cell phone and landline calls in their city go to their dispatch centers. OEM was supportive of this. There are some initial costs, but those same costs are going to be there in five to seven years when this happens. And I don't know what those costs are going to be in five to seven years for what our initial costs are now. So we're looking to get ahead of the curve on this in Oak Creek, so we can provide a better, quicker service to our residents. I will talk about, and one of the things, this is a six-month process, so by coming forward and asking the council to approve this tonight, I will sign this agreement with AT&amp;T, and then they will start the process of working with all of the other cell phone carriers to have all of their antennas now being rerouted to Oak Creek for our area. One of the issues that we have is One of the issues that we have is we, they can't tell us how many calls we're going to receive from this. So if there's a tower on a border, they can point those in our direction and that's, Next Gen 911 will be much more accurate. So we still may have to transfer calls to another community. And that will happen, I think, in the future as well. Our biggest avenue that we feel we'll have to transfer to is our calls on the freeway. But a lot of the calls that we get on the freeway will still be a quicker response for our fire department than has to go out there because they're responding on that corridor to accidents. So there still is a plus. We're trying to get ahead. And when Next Gen 911 comes out, we feel if every department with their own dispatch center is going to be a part of this, we're going to be put in the queue somewhere and we're going to have to wait our turn. We're trying to get ahead of the game, provide a better service to our residents. Upfront now, again, this is something we tried to do eight, 10 years ago and we were unsuccessful. And since the county is open to this concept now, it seems like it's the right time for us to do this. We have a couple options of, I mean, in my opinion, we have two. We can either make the move now or we can wait and see what the costs are five to seven years from now and get put in that queue. I'd rather be proactive in this. We've tried to estimate all of the numbers with Kevin involved, what he was hearing on the advisory committee, with our dispatchers, with our current staffing. I put in here in all transparency, we feel, we believe based off our estimations, we'll be able to handle those. But the saying, we don't know what we don't know, is what we don't know right now. So that's where we're, that's what we're playing with this right now is we don't know what it'll be. And we may not know for a few months of how this is going to impact us. So that's kind of the background of why we want to do this. We feel our current lines for 911 are acceptable for what we need now. If we don't, I have the cost of what AT&amp;T said an additional line cost us per month in here as well. So that's the request at this point.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for the Chief? Steve?
Well, it's not so much a question, Chief, it's more of a comment. I think it's a good idea and I understand that the technology will try and do its best to pinpoint the callers and such like that. But unless you get inundated with calls from other communities, I feel that you end up, if we go through with this and you end up getting a call for emergency in South Milwaukee or Caledonia or wherever the case might be, I just think that's the cost of doing business. I mean, public safety is public safety. And if you get handling calls for the neighboring community, I mean, that's just, to me, that's just the way of life. I mean, you're not going to be able to bifurcate the whole system and say, well, it's just going to be Oak Creek. So I'm a little disappointed, but I'm not surprised that Milwaukee County would want to charge something. But nonetheless, I think it's a good idea that we move forward and try and streamline the process and cut a few seconds off response time.
To clarify that, that was the initial concept of all of this. That was, and it was a couple discussions that were had. Talking to manager Westrich from OEM, very supportive of this concept now. And she took the advice from the advisory committee. That's why they were put there. No billing right now. When Next Gen comes out, that's a different path. Some communities may say, okay, if we don't want to take our calls, will you handle and what will you charge us at that point? That's a conversation I'm trying to get ahead of right now and go this route.
It's a good idea. I mean, like I said, if you save a few minutes in response time, I think it's very important.
And I can say from a personal use, I've had to call 911 on a cell phone expecting and knowing that I wasn't going to get our own dispatcher. But when you're in that situation, I wasn't expecting to get somebody else, even though I knew that was what was going to happen. Had to say everything, get transferred back to Oak Creek where I got somebody I knew. And one of the things that doesn't happen when we go to the county first, I should have mentioned this. When you call on a cell phone, you get the address information that comes in. That doesn't get transferred back to Oak Creek when they transfer that phone call. So we're not getting the address back. So that all has to be verified over the phone again with the dispatcher and then with the caller. So it slows the process down. I think it's a, I think it is, and I said, it's a better service for our residents.
And for what it's worth, I had a medical emergency in Milwaukee last week, Wednesday. And I got Milwaukee County and I had to give the complete assessment to the dispatcher, the situation with the person. And then when he goes, okay, I'll transfer you to Milwaukee Fire, then I have to repeat the entire situation to him. And it's like, well, just transfer me the first time, please. But that's the way they did it.
Steve Alderman, Dukenyak, third district, the approximate $8,000 cost, if that's in your budget for this year?
So this is not in our budget for this year, and I don't know that this will get accomplished this year. So I'm asking for approval to get started on this process. The initial equipment cost, we'll have to find this out. The annual monthly cost, I'll have to work with Bridget because Fund 55 was a fund that was carved out for dispatch. And that's a fund we've supplemented and we're finding if we do certain things, we have to come up with. So I am not saying I won't be coming at some point saying, can we get this added to Fund 55 in the future? Because it's a different fund than our police budget. Right now, I don't, if we have to come up with something this year, and it starts this year, we'll get this year covered. It's for next year's budget. I'd have to, that's something I'd have to be considering to get proper funding in that account.
Okay, thank you.
I think that, you know, in today's day and age, so many of our seniors now, believe it or not, you would think landlines are the only place they go, use, but no, so many of our seniors now are using cell phones. So I think this to me is just a fundamental low-brainer. I think it'll be a very useful tool here and very helpful.
Thanks. I like the time to service, 30 to 60 seconds cut off on your rollout time. Appreciate that. I think that would be money well spent. Question, St. Francis, they remain, their calls that still go to Milwaukee County?
911 calls would. They would have to do their own resolution. So this funding would not be part of the cost sharing with St. Francis.
Be something on top of that.
Yes. So they would have to handle their own proclamations, their own process. St. Francis, a lot of calls because of their border, the way it is around Milwaukee. And hearing from Bayside, how theirs are, they get a lot of 911 calls for the city of Milwaukee that they're transferring. Next Gen will take care of some of that if they can handle it properly. But if St. Francis wanted us to handle these, it's a different concept than we started dispatching with them. So we'd have to have some discussions with that.
Make sure those are ahead if they come that way.
Yep, they will be. And that process is in the works already.
Great. Good. Thanks, Steve. Nothing else? Action on item number 11.
Act move to approve resolution number 12147-031720. That's authorizing the Police Department to transition to provide services as 911 public safety answering.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Great, moving on, engineering. Item number 12 covers the infamous annual WPDES stormwater report. Accepting the 2019 annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater and our 216 permit. We'll turn it over, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you, Ken. So yes, this is our annual report. This outlines and documents the activities in 2019 that were undertaken in our mission under this permit. The WPDES permit, standing for Wisconsin Pluton Discharge Elimination System permit. And so these are all activities to manage the stormwater runoff into our waterways and to do such in a manner that minimizes sediment into these waterways. This includes a lot of maintenance, including street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, other maintenance projects, minor storm sewer projects, maintenance on our regional detention ponds, culverts, and our roadside ditches. On the administrative end, we also facilitate the stormwater permits, roads control permits, and the related inspections of those sites. And then recently, we had created a new permit, a GI permit, green infrastructure. And that mirrors the more recent newly instituted requirements of MMSD. So we did issue a few of those permits in the past year. And so basically then, how we coordinate and minister all of these activities is, of course, through Fund 38, which is the stormwater fee. And so that funds a lot of equipment and the personnel. So some of the engineering staff and also some of the DPW staff that actually undertakes the field activities, the street sweeping, the excavation and the maintenance of the ditches. So really, over the last couple of years, this fund also funded the replacement of two street sweepers and a backhoe and also the brining system, which got up and running, I think, January of this year. So the early returns on that are positive in that salt usage is down. Now, we don't have those numbers yet, but I expect there will be something to report on actual savings on salt used and related costs. And of course, the environmental benefits of less salt than the roadways, washing to the storm sewer and of course to the waterways. So.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Good information. I mean, if you're an information drunk, you like, I'm, interesting stuff in there, but I know it's not everyone's cup of tea. With that said, I will take action on item number 12, resolution to accept the annual report.
Clark moves to adopt resolution number 12145-031720. A resolution accepting the 2019 annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater and our 216 permit.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Great. Item number 13 is the resolution to approving the residence at Oak View Condominium Development Agreement with Mod Home LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 10730 South Howell Avenue. Mike?
Yes, thank you, Ken. And so they are, we are currently reviewing plans for this development down at South Howell Avenue for the development of the Oak View condominium, Oak View residences, I guess, is the name of the development. At any rate, it is a development that is going to be constructed in two phases. They expect to do phase one this year, phase two next year. Total of 43 housing, house units, 42 and the clubhouse would be constructed in phase one. And phase two is the remaining 42. There are other amenities that will be constructed in those phases. There are improvements to Howell Avenue to accommodate traffic in and out of the development. These are some minor expansion of the roadway at the entrance, accommodating turning movements in and out. And phase two, I know that it spelled out that the dog park and its amenities would be constructed along with that phase. But this development agreement basically solidifies their design and construction of the public facilities. Also, a private facility, which is the interceptor sewer, that is included in this development agreement because it states the agreement that they will be designed according to all public standards, DNR approvals, MMSD approvals, and inspected full-time as it is constructed. So it's the Howell Avenue improvements, it's the public water main improvements, the private sanitary, private interceptor sewer improvements that really are the meat of this agreement.
Great. Questions for Mike? Greg?
I know this, at Planning Commission, this development was discussed in length. And one of the holdups was the dog park. I do see that in phase two, it says that as it's illustrated in Exhibit C, it must be approved by the Plan Commission. I don't know if it's my copy. I don't really see it on Exhibit C. I know originally it was on the easternmost portion of the development, right behind the residential area there. I don't know if they moved it somewhere or if it was still temporarily there until they bring it back to Plan Commission.
The latest information I have is that it is indeed on that eastern portion of the site.
But this spells out it has to be brought back to Plan Commission, if I'm reading that correctly. Correct? They have to bring back phase two to Plan Commission.
Okay, I got you. Yes, that is a provision, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Great, we'll take action on item number 13.
Act move to approve resolution number 12146-031720. Approving the residences at Oak View Condominium Development Agreement with Mod Home LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 10730 South Howell Avenue.
Clark will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Under the License Committee, I'm going to brief this turn over to the clerk for some clarifications on some of the items on the council report before we go to Alderman Kuzakowski.
I just want to make a note that item number two within the committee report, special event permit to Brandy Wright for a plastic anemia and MDS International Foundation for the March of Marrow Run Walk. That event has been canceled. I have also been notified that items four and five are tentatively scheduled to be canceled as well. But because they're a little bit further out, that hasn't been definitive as of today. Just a note.
Okay. Great, thank you, Catherine. Steve?
Thank you. Catherine, I was going to raise that issue with you. If they're being canceled because of the current health issue, this is kind of a unique situation, I think. Could we not approve the request and then just give them an opportunity for a new date? Or do we have to go make them go through the whole process over again?
So at this point, we aren't, we didn't request the cancellation. So number two for the March for Marrow, that organizer contacted me and told me that she was canceling the event. So that item would just be.
On.
Yeah, eliminated from the motion. But as of today, item four and five are still on. The organizer hasn't canceled yet. So I would just say number two would be the item that would be removed.
But would we be able to just say, okay, we're going to approve your permit for May 2nd regarding to item number four? And if they decide to change it to August, it would still be good considering our situation?
Yeah, and I just, I mean, I guess I would have to just clarify, you know, so the council understands, these dates are because of their locations where they're having them. You know, item number four is actually at their business location, so they would determine the date. It would be the style event as long as there was nothing, no changes to the special event application, the food, beverage, what they were planning on doing. And five is an item that is actually being held at Drexel Town Square, so that runs through our process. So it would be a matter of looking at whether or not there was already an activity happening that we would need to approve. So it's really just the location and the date for that one.
Okay, so two is the only one off the board then?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a suggestion, actually, not to contradict, but I would consider item two is gone. But as to items four and five, I would say treat them similarly. As a point of order, I would think they would need to come back if we're going to change the date, given that there might be other events in the city. Just trying to facilitate the clerk's efforts in terms of what might need to be done and represented to the applicants. And also if action's going to be taken now, I would suggest that the approval of items four and five, though five is four and five, though five is a little bit longer from now and given the nature of what's been explained, I would just say for council advisement and being mindful of this situation, that I would add to any approval unless prohibited elsewhere in a superseding order of local, state or federal government. And I say that because of the ever-changing situation, so as far as.
I'm glad you're saying that, Steve. So you take care of that one, Steve.
I just am saying not to take it lightly. I think procedurally it would need to come back if it's a different date. And I think that as a point of order, given especially what's on the agenda tonight, I wouldn't want the council to be in a situation where we are needing to reconvene and remembering to come back for certain items that have been approved and then only to resend them and also to give the applicants time to plan. So that is a suggestion.
Okay.
For you to consider.
Okay, too, Steve.
Yeah, and I'll have to read this quickly, I won't be able to read my own handwriting here. Okay, so everybody's had a chance to not only look, but we've had an opportunity to discuss the common council report for the license committee. Does anybody have any additional questions, cares or concerns? Okay, understanding that item two on the report is, is off the board, so to speak. And with regards to items four and five, unless prohibited elsewhere by order of local, state or federal governments, Kirkowski would make a motion that the council grant, grant the various license requests as I've stated or amended as listed on this report for March 17, 2020.
Act second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Great, item number 18, there will be no action taken. So does anyone want to make a comment, anything before we close up shop?
I just want to say real quick on behalf of the residents in the 6th district, I appreciate everything that we're putting into trying to take care of the awareness and, and what's going on out there right now. Serious times.
For what it's worth, there, there, those who are listening and stuff, there was a post on one of the Facebook community pages about the restaurants in the, in the city that are going to start suffering from this, from this issue. And it was, hey, can we start posting the, the restaurants and, and what their businesses are and stuff like that? And I was going to suggest to Leslie, I'll follow up with her, that, you know, it, it might be a good public service that, maybe it isn't, maybe she doesn't have time, I don't know. But, you know, if we've got restaurants out there that are only going to do, carry out, carry out and delivering Oak Creek, then, you know, maybe we need to, to try and support them a little bit because they're going to, I think they're going to take a major hit. And I just, we got to do what we can just to help them, even if we publicize the fact that, hey, you know, certain restaurants open and they only got, they're offering this type of service. That's all.
I'll say, just to wrap up shop, we are, we as a council and, and we as a city are, I believe, unbelievably privileged and thankful to have the staff and the, the safety services and health department folks who are, have put in, you know, great work here, they're, you know, have demonstrated their, their professionalism, their decisiveness, their compassion and their care for the city, the city and the citizens. So I think that from that standpoint, we are in very good hands. So just be smart out there, be, take care of your, you know, elderly friends, family, neighbors, watch out for folks, be smart, folks who know what's going on or they're not doing this despite you. So take it, take heed, be safe and, and we'll get through this. So with that said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Kowski can make a motion to adjourn. Clerk will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Great, good night.